It's 5 o'clock, time to call the meeting order. It's actually a little after 5, but we'll let Mr. Smith slide. We have a large crowd here tonight, we appreciate it. It's a good reason for everybody to be here, and we'll get into that in just a second. We also have Mr. Jay Vaden from our youth leadership. Do we have any more youth leadership here? No more? Jay, do you want to get up and speak? I'm just kidding. We'll go into our prayer list as we normally do. We're a thankful night, we've got Scotty Yaman and Robin Moore both back with us. They've both been, one's recovering from surgery, well, both recovering from surgery. One of them's had a few more surgeries than the other. Need to remember Ms. Neva Taylor, Terry Harville's wife, she's still battling cancer. Logan Fields, he's a senior at SCHS, had his jaw broken in a baseball game, his mouth wired shut. Need to remember Ms. Becky Cookston's family as they mourn the loss of their mother-in-law. We need to remember Ms. Leslie Smith and her family as her uncle passed away. Ms. Leslie Antle, FRS custodian, father's in hospice. Jerry Wilson's wife recovering from gallstone surgery. The Forts River schools' families that are affected by the car crash that took the lives of a mother and father of five Forts River students.
Oh, my goodness.
We need to remember Amanda Mahaney at the central office, her great-grandmother passed away. Ms. Jeanne Hicks at Smith County High School, grandmother's in the hospital. We need to continue to remember Josh Dillard. And we also need to remember our teachers and students as testing windows approaching for the upcoming exit test. Is there anybody else that we need to remember on the prayer list?
Ms. Fay Massey, she was our former, at Forts River School, she worked in the kitchen, and she's battling cancer.
Ms. Fay Massey at Forts River?
She was, she's former cafeteria.
Former cafeteria.
But she was there forever.
She had surgery yesterday.
Had surgery yesterday. Are there any others? If not, let's go to the Lord in prayer. Dear heaven and father, we just want to come to you this day thanking you for another day of life. You've granted us for this beautiful day that you've given us. Father, we are so richly blessed, and we just always want to be thankful for those things that you give us. Father, we have a lengthy prayer request tonight, and we just want to pray for all those on it, those that need your blessings in our prayers. Father, we just want to pray that it be your will, you'll bring them back to their much-wanted health. Father, we want to thank you for Scotty being here and Robin being here and any others. Father, we've been sick and shut in. Father, we just want to thank you for helping to get them back to their much-wanted health. Again, Father, we want to pray for any of those on this list that needs our prayers. Father, we want to continue to remember our teachers and students. It's the end of the year here, we just want to pray that they'll do well on their testing, Father, and that everything will go well with that. Father, we just want to pray that you'll be with us through the rest of this meeting. Father, help us to do things in our lives that are pleasing to you. So these things we pray in Christ's name, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will start off tonight with some awards and recognitions. Ms. Gina, if you will, start us off.
Okay. We're going to introduce our top 10 seniors from both high schools tonight, and we're very proud of them, and we're going to start with going to high schools first. We're going to start with number 10 and go through to number 1, and then we're going to let them talk to us just for a minute. And I told them not to be nervous, this is real informal. So, and if I mispronounce their names, I told them just to correct me. So, here we go. Number 10, going to high school, is Ms. Patlin Virginia Redd. I think that's very soon I'll give you a necklace. Just go right over there and stand and start crying for us. Number 9, Ms. Tenille Lee Williams. Number 8, Shelby Elizabeth West. Number 7, Ms. Dr. Peyton Thomas Glover. Number 5, Ms. Leah Ray Jean. How did it? Idiot. Number 4, Mr. Kevin Cardwell Webb. Number 3, Ms. Delaney Ray Harrelson. Number 2, Ms. Salida Torre for going to high school, is Ms. Robin Anne Ford. Number 1, the Validator for going to high school, is Ms. Brady Faith Baker. Okay. Now, remember, okay, we're going to restate your name. We're going to say their parents' name. Parents, when, as they're talking, please stand. Be proud. They're going to tell their future plans. They're going to talk about their future, or their college major, and they're going to tell their favorite teacher, "Précaire, tu es fou, en moi."
Hello, my name is Peyton Ray. I'm the daughter of Kristen Trudy Ray. I plan to attend Tennessee Tech in the fall, and I'm going to major in biology. And my favorite teacher is Coach Leslie because he helped me become a better master.
I'm Tenille Williams, and I'm the daughter of Danny and Teddy Williams. And I plan to attend college at Tennessee Tech, and I want to major in biology. And my favorite teacher, I have a lot, but one that I truly love would be Mr. Renee Tisdale. She taught us a whole lot, more than this subject curriculum and everything, but more than just the basics, just basic stuff. And she also cared a lot for us.
Hello, my name is Shelby West. I'm the daughter of Mark and Shannon West. I will be attending Tennessee Tech in the fall to study prepharmacy. My favorite teacher is Miss Haley Randolph because she has an amazing personality.
My name is Peyton Glover, and I'm the son of Gary and Laurie Glover. And I plan to attend NTSU to do nursing. And my favorite teacher is my 4th grade teacher, Ms. Jane Hall, who has always been caring to me, and still is to this day.
My name is Taylor Beth Mofield, and I'm the granddaughter of Teresa and Wayne Mofield. I plan to attend Tennessee Tech, and I want to major in business with a minor in communications. And my favorite teacher would be Ms. Amanda Mason because she's not only been there for me with educational needs, but also personal needs.
My name is Leah Jean. My parents are Andy and Amy Jean. I plan to go to Ball State for a year and transfer to a university to major in education. And my favorite teacher is probably Ms. Renee Keaton because I absolutely love serving as her HOSA president for a year and attending HOSA state competitions with her.
My name is Kevin Webb, and my parents are Tina and Michael Driver. I plan on going to NTSU and major in forensic. And my favorite teacher was my 5th grade teacher, Ms. Kathy Drenberg. She was just an inspiration to me, and she just made me what I am today.
My name is Delaney Harrelson, and I'm the daughter of Sheila and Michael Wood of Lancaster. I plan to attend NTSU in the fall, major in nursing, minor in marketing and mathematics, and then later attend a school in Nashville to study anesthesia. My favorite teacher would have to be Ms. Stacy Reeves because she never stops believing in me.
My name is Robin Annett Hord. I'm the daughter of Robin Annett Hord. I will be attending Cumberland University in the fall to play softball and major in prepharmacy. My favorite teacher would have to be Ms. Haley Randolph because no matter how down on myself I've ever gotten, she's always pushed me to be my best, and she's taught me quite a few lessons.
My name is Brady Baker. I'm the daughter of David and Mary Baker and Marcy and Randy Smith. I plan to go to the University of Tennessee, Doc's School in the fall to major in pre-medicine and minor in Spanish, and then go into medical school to be a trauma surgeon. And my favorite teacher is Ms. Larissa Miller, and she's my favorite teacher because she inspired me to become a legalian in Spanish.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to acknowledge you. Thank you for being the principal. Is there anything you would like to say?
We've had a good day today.
Brady's had a lot.
We've had a lot of fun. Every time I've been with this bunch, they did it.
Mr. Manning?
Well, I just want to congratulate all of y'all for being the top 10, and wish you well on your endeavors, and thank you for all your hard work.
Any other board member would you like to say something? Mr. Smith, do you want to close it out?
I spoke to them a little more in the day after the day after luncheon, and I know they don't want me to bore them again tonight, but I did make the comment, what a classy, and I don't want to say that to Ms. Gina, what a classy group this group was. And I meant that. And you're the type of citizen we hope to recruit back into Smith County. We need you back. Get out here and get that education. And always remember this, we say this all the time, it's a total team effort. People in this room, all these people right here are for you. And you got where you're at because of that, and remember that down the road when it's time to give back. Let's get you back into Smith County, and we're very proud of you.
Thank you. Let's go. I'm going to sign thanks for Smith County High School, and then we'll let parents and all students exit, okay? Okay, Smith County High School, top 10, class 2016. Number 10, Kevin Joseph Barrett. And I think he is at a soccer, playing soccer. Number 8, Kathryn Laurel Fox, who goes by Katie. Number 7, Sarah Elizabeth Bingham. Number 6, Lena Kaye Brawls. Number 5, Casey Lynn Gregory. And she is not here tonight because she is actually in class tonight. Number 4, Donald Zachary Wayne Chaney, who goes by Zack. Number 3, Justin Dale Jackson Kim. Number 2, Ms. Salida Torre for Smith County High School, William Alexander Wayne Chaney. Number 1, Validator for Smith County High School, is Christina Marie Barnett. And we're going to ask you to do the same thing. You say your name, your parents' name, parents' stand as they're talking, future plans, major in college, and your favorite teacher, en moi.
My name is Kevin Barrett. I am the son of Robin Barrett and Billy Barrett. I plan on going to Tennessee Tech. I want to get a major in physics, a minor in mathematics, and a minor in Scandinavian interpretive dance. I eventually want to go on to teach, and my favorite teacher would be Mr. Gross, just because over the last four years, he's probably the one person who's made me the person I am today. He's inspired me to want to inspire others.
My name is Katie Fox. I'm the daughter of Erin and Janice Fox. In the fall, I plan on attending the University of Tennessee in Knoxville and majoring in biology. And my favorite teacher is probably also Mr. Gross, as he always teaches me to do better in not only my math, but in classes, but every aspect of it.
My name is Sarah Bingham. I'm the daughter of Grant and Sharon Bingham. In the fall, I plan to attend Tennessee Tech and major in pre-bone A in medicine. And my favorite teacher would have to be my 8th grade teacher, Ms. Diana Preston. And she always taught me to follow my dreams and never give up on anything in life.
I'm Lena Brawls. I'm the daughter of Tom and Amy Brawls. I plan to attend Tennessee Tech in the fall, and I want to major in biology. My favorite teacher was Ms. Denise Hackett. She really made biology enjoyable for me. I loved her in there, and she just makes the classing enjoyable.
I'm Zack. Those are my parents. I'm going to Tech, and I'm going to get a couple majors.
Mr. Gross?
I am Justin Kim. I am the son of Lisa Huff and the late Joey Kim. I currently plan on going to the University of Tennessee Knoxville, go Vols. Plan on majoring in pre-medicine and hope to one day become an oncologist. My favorite teacher would have to be my dad. He was my 7th and 8th grade teacher. Well, he would have been my 7th, 8th grade teacher, but I did have him in 7th grade. Now, I do have to give a special shout-out to Mr. Gross because as far as high school goes, he was my favorite high school teacher. And both of them were great at teaching, both of them were great at letting you understand just how it is they got, the answers they got.
I'm Alex Chaney. To put more eloquently what he said, my parents are Janice and Wayne Chaney. Plan on going to Tennessee Tech as well, getting degrees in engineering. And also, my favorite teacher is Mr. Gross because he's just kind of awesome.
I'm Tina Barnett. My parents are Christine and Stanley Barnett. I'll be attending Vanderbilt University and, what, majoring in something? In a major. I'm interested in forensic science. And my favorite teacher, Mr. Gross, is up there. I'll feel guilty if I don't mention him. But also, Ms. Carolyn Bowles is my kindergarten teacher, and I honestly don't remember being 5 years old, but I'm sure that was an eventful time.
Ms. Six, would you like to say something?
I just want to say how incredibly proud I am of the top 10. Yeah. Kevin was a joy at school, as he has been here. We had to simmer him down a little bit, but that's okay. Over half of the kids standing up here have over 30 on their ACT. Three of them actually have a 35, and I think that's pretty remarkable. So, very proud of them and what they have accomplished, all of them.
Yes, we are very proud of you far as the board and the county.
We just, both top 10s, it's a remarkable thing, and we wish you all the best. And Mr. Smith said, we want you back in Smith County, so get your education and come back.
You actually have more than one board member, so Mr. Yaman, would you like to say something?
Well, I'm, like Brian said, particularly with you guys, I'm a prior principal at Smith County High School, and I know what you have to go through, and to get where you are is someplace that I never walked, although I was in the top 10 in that committee. But anyway, your parents, your school, your community, and this is, we're going to all of you, and we're proud of all of you, and do the best you can. Don't ever quit. Once you get in college, you just start studying then, because that's what will make you what you do in college. So, good luck to all of you, and have a good trip through life the rest of the way.
I spoke to you guys all again, and I guess you heard, and I meant the same thing back at you. If you take anything away from what I talked about the other day when we had our luncheon, hard work and cover up a lot of mistakes. And I have no doubt this group has a lot of work at it, which we're going to be saying here today. Thank you all. You're all a wonderful center county. Great.
Thank you for sharing your child with us and trusting us to educate them. Students, take pride in where you've come from. Have faith to keep going, and enjoy your journey and make all the best. Just one note to remember, which you probably already have it marked on your calendar, but graduation for going to high school is Friday, May 20th, at 7:00 p.m. And Smith County High School is on Saturday, May 21st, at 10:00 a.m.
Again, we want to congratulate both top 10s and parents, and we know you've pushed them, and that's wonderful. Teachers that are here, we know, I mean, it's, can't say enough. Just appreciate it, and congratulations to you all. You're all welcome to go ahead if you want to, or you can stay and enjoy this wonderful meeting room. We'll move on ahead. Let's move to our consent items. Do we have a motion on our consent items?
I make a motion, consent items.
I'll second it.
Mr. Campbell? Motion. Ms. Gatton Bond, second. Any discussion? There's no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye. Any offense? Set item. Now, take a look at our superintendent actions, hope everyone's had a chance to look at those. Now, we will move on to new business A. This is our textbook adoption, CTE textbook adoption. Do we have a motion on new business A?
Motion to approve new business A.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second? Mr. Taylor, any discussion? No discussion. Then this does involve money, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Ms. Yaman?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Move on to new business B. This is our athletic contract renewal for Drayer Physical Therapy. Do we have a motion on new business B? Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion?
No, only athletic.
Yeah, we hold them, the principals, and they, they basically told the coaches, and they were extremely happy with the contract, so they were very pleased with services offered, which not Warner, not Stew's awful, but I think they were very well represented.
We just adopted for the renewal. There's no more discussion, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Move on to new business C. This is a bid approval for CCTV system at UHS. Do we have a motion on new business C? Taylor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Gatton Bond, any discussion? There's no discussion, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. We're going to new business D. This is a special education contract empowering therapy services for the school year 1617. Do we have a motion on new business D?
Sure, ma'am.
Mr. Yaman, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Yaman, any discussion? Same contract?
Yes.
Yaman, there's no discussion, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. We're going to new business E. This is a special education contract Dynamic Solutions for Kids LLC for school year 1617. Do we have a motion on new business E?
I'll make a motion on new business E.
Ms. Gatton Bond, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion? There's no discussion, we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Okay. We'll move on now to our discussion A. It's a drug and alcohol policy. And Mr. Wainford, do you want to say?
The board has asked us to take a look at our policy, and it's a policy of consideration to expand the panel for the UTS. Right now, we do have a five panel test for pre-employment, post-accident, and regional supervision tests. The policy act has seven different rules, but the last two, which include heroin and ecstasy, are actually considered anti-forcious, but they're specifically listed. So, right now, we have what's called the DOT five panel test, which is a voluntary participation test for that. If we look to expand that, it would include, which would include our edutigs, benzos, and quidwards. The benzos would include valium, librium, and zanac, and then the edutigs are what's traditionally, I guess, commonly known as downers. The reason that we needed to look at, in a closed letter, if you expand your test, you engage some additional privacy concerns from an analysis standpoint, if it ever got out. We have prepared a letter that you will be sending, thought about email, and on the present list, and for you to take a look at. And I'm going to ask that it be placed back on for discussion next month, once you've seen that. And also, I think it may be wise, we actually, our testing is conducted by a third-party administrator, which every case we've ever read recommends having someone else do that as opposed to ourselves. And we may have our representative who's been with us a long time now to come and speak to expanding that. But we had some discussion, we have a five panel test, but seven are listed, and that's why two of those are included in the top form. But take a look at the letter, see what you think. It's possible to expand it, and maybe advise me to do that, or we'll have to be really careful to set off the cutoff levels and things. That's where you get it, because most of these that you would expand to are prescription medications. And you would run into the fact that many people that would test positive would have prescriptions and what the cutoff level is. Of course, then you get into, yes, there is a prescription, but over and above that is that prescription being abused. And then you get into cutoff levels, are they taking too much, or in some cases, I suppose too little, but most of the concern would be on too much. So, that's where we are on. We've got a pretty detailed letter for you, and take a look at it. And, Mr. Chairman, if you would, if you put it back on for discussion next month, and I'll get with you between now and then to see if you want the representative here to speak to the board's word.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wainford. We'll just put that on next month. Any other discussion on that? We'll just wait till we see the letter, and then we can discuss whatever next month. Okay, we will move on to our annual policy review. Did anybody have any questions or concerns about our March policies?
I didn't for the March policy, but for the April policies, which we
I don't, I didn't for the March policy, but for the April policies, which we will discuss next month, I think we need to take a look at the student alcohol and drug testing. If we can just put that, mark that for discussion as well. I think that's something that we need to take a look at. I have had discussions with Judge Michael Collins and spent a lot of time in juvenile court. It's a problem in Smith County and we need to address it. I have spoken with him, uh, with, at length with him about one of the things, some of the things that we might could do. And, um, I think that it would be appropriate to put that on for discussion for next month.
We'll add that on for next month. Any other concerns or questions?
As part of that, I guess it goes with it part and parcel, but student alcohol and drug testing as well as athlete drug testing, mark both of those. Just to be specific.
Okay. If there are no more questions, that will move on. Of course, we have no need for executive session. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Campbell?
I'll second it.
Ms. Gatton-Bine? All those in favor say aye. Any votes? Motion adjourned. Meet, meeting adjourned.